Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Middleboro School Committee's meeting. The first order of business is, as usual, public comment, and I would remind people that if they have questions as we go on tonight, if they could put them in the chat box or email to the email that will take those questions. The only thing I would ask is you wait a little bit until we're at that point talking about certain things, because the questions and comments continue up, and sometimes we have a little bit of trouble finding them. We want to make sure we answer everybody's question who has a question. The first item today, just so everyone knows, is a piece of a public comment. Mark Jermaine had sent a note. It got lost in the shuffle. The town manager talked to me yesterday and told me his question, we had not responded to his question, so I asked Sean to do a little digging. He was able to find it. It was just a small issue that had happened, and it was since corrected. And he had asked that he be allowed to be on our StreamYard to be able to participate in public comment, and if he had other questions. I sent him a note this afternoon, which I had forwarded a copy to everybody on the committee, so they knew my correspondence. I said, unfortunately, we're not able to do that for several reasons. Number one, this form that we use, StreamYard, only allows a certain number of people. The numbers that we currently have, especially tonight, because the principals are going over their plan, essentially fill up the StreamYard. Second, we had established a little over a year ago what the process would be for people to do public comment. And that process is listed on each of our agendas. And I also included that. We've actually expanded that process, because we include information that we get from people from Facebook. So it's Facebook, YouTube, and obviously the emails. And I said that was the process that we had established, and so until we change that process, we'd be abiding by that process for the time being. Just so everybody knows, this is the first, if you will, issue that's arisen with our, the process that we've had. Like I said, we've done it for over a year. I have talked to parents, and I know many of you have talked to parents who like the process, who have actually talked to us about, would there be a way that we can expand it? As we went into regular sessions when those eventually came up, was there a way that we could do it? And we will look at that, but you know, part of it becomes what the open meeting law allows, those pieces. Rest assured that everything that we've done followed exactly what the open meeting law allows and the governor's directive changed to. So there is nothing. People will do different things. I know the selectmen use Zoom, and they put people on Zoom all the time and ask questions. In some ways, I think it's easier if people can just type in or send their questions so that they can be answered. We try to answer every single one, and we post it. But again, I found this information out yesterday after 5:00 from the town manager. I sent the note to Mr. Jermaine today. I'll see, we can put it on the agenda to discuss if we want to change our meeting format. The problem with changing the meeting format could be that we, depending on what system we use, we don't allow Facebook and YouTube postings. So when we put it on the agenda, I would like to see people, you know, being able to comment on what they like or don't like about the way the agenda is done. And to be honest with you, I don't know how much longer we keep this format, because this format, in my hope, I mean, we're going to open schools up. So we should probably think about moving to a regular meeting setting, which we are allowed to do as long as we maintain the space. My concern more than anything about that currently is, just so everyone knows, is I don't want us to take space that hurts the schools or has to have the custodians constantly redoing space for us. That doesn't make sense to me, especially since we'll really be moving into April next week. So for essentially two and a half months, I, you know, I think we can do what we need to do or find a way to do things that covers until everything works out. So I just wanted to lay that out. I know it's public comment. It is not, you know, we don't usually respond to public comment, but I wanted to lay that out, and we'll go from there. Does that make sense to everybody? Any particular questions anyone has off the top of their head, so I could, if I need to answer. Mr. Rowe?
Through you, Mr. Chair. My first question is, well, my only question is, part of the reason we do this format is because of space limitations within Nickerson Theater, well, then, sorry, the middle school theater at Nichols. Because we have to cap the amount of people that would be allowed in there to watch us if we were in person.
Yeah, so yeah, we would.
Before the state was opening now.
Yeah, exactly. So the numbers wouldn't necessarily allow us a normal meeting, if you will. So if, my imagination, and I think you guys will appreciate this. For example, if we were going to talk about reopening schools, that as we saw last time, I think we had 177 comments and questions from Facebook alone. It generated people who were interested in a wide variety of things. I don't want to not have a meeting that people can't show up to and participate in, especially around issues that really affect their students, their children's lives. So yes, you're right, Greg. I think that those numbers expand a little more as they open. But again, I want to make sure that we're not using a space that people are going to have to change over constantly or do anything, and that pertains to the whole space. So for example, we know the gym's become a cafeteria, so for some reason we're meeting in a gym, we can't. The other piece is too, we have talked, and my hope is that when next year rolls around, we were going to move our meetings to the new high school. Again, for spatial considerations, I don't want to, they're just learning that building in April and going to be taking it over, so it was always our conversation that we had that we may not start this calendar year for school. We may wait until the next September starts to move to the high school. Because part of what I'd like to do, if I'm still on this committee, is start each meeting with a piece of the new high school and ask the students to film those pieces and sort of give us a little outline so the community can see it. I think it's going to be tough currently for us to have walkthroughs that we had envisioned when we started this whole process. So we at least want to give people walkthroughs each day, and also spend more time talking about particular places. So we want to showcase how the music room is different, how the black box theater is different, how, what the math labs look like, what the kiln looks like, those type of things. And even, even from the aspect that we know was problematic in the past, which was if you take the stage, just showing what space is available for storage and costumes and everything like that, showing the difference. So I, I just want everybody to know that. Any other questions before I move on away from this topic? I know we don't usually talk about it, but I want to make sure. Mr. Rowe?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I dropped in on the selectmen's meeting last week just to check out the budget discussion. And I personally love StreamYard, and I used StreamYard for the candidates night that we did a couple nights ago, and I love it. I do, however, like the ability to like, put your, like, if you're going to ask a question, like, put your face on the screen and like, you know, speak it. If, I know a lot of people prefer the written one, and so all of the huge benefits that we've got by going to StreamYard, all of the amazing interaction via Facebook and YouTube is awesome. But I wonder, is there like a, an advanced like StreamYard account that we could get that would allow more, more faces on the screen or something like that?
We're going to talk about it, and again, it's got to pertain to options, right? But I would say this to you, Rich, part of the problem becomes, you know, it's, you either open it up to everybody, or you can't pick and choose. You know, obviously, we can pick and choose in the sense of people who are on our agenda and doing things. That makes sense. For example, we had ladies who came in a couple of weeks ago to talk about the survey that would go out. So we've constantly had people come in and talk about various topics that were on our agenda. It becomes much more difficult for people to, for lack of terms, be there and want to interject when they can for numbers-wise, and that's why we use the way we have. And again, I haven't heard from people, I've heard the opposite from people, that they really liked it. I think, you know, I can recall when I first started, the public comment for school committee was only the public comment section. It didn't pertain to any of the agenda items. It didn't pertain to anything else. We changed that over the period of time and included everything. And you would occasionally get from a parent or somebody who came, "I find it difficult to go up to the microphone and say what I want." You know, I kind of feel that's overwhelming at times, and I've talked to them about it. And to be honest with you, when we talked to them about it that time, we didn't really have another option. These pieces didn't exist. I want to make, obviously, these meetings as interactive as we possibly can. Clearly, you know, students can partake in the meetings. They don't have to watch them tonight. They can look. They can look at various pieces. But I want people to know that if they have questions, either we try to answer them, if we can, right? Or at least we hopefully get back to them. I know when we did the opening of school in September, there were people with lots of questions that we at the time didn't have answers for, but we made sure they were included in the frequently asked questions and that type of thing. I know sometimes it gets hard, because people will ask, different people will ask the same question at various points in the meeting. And one of the things I really try to do is just say that question's been answered, or every once in a while, if the question's important, we'll repeat it a couple of times. But I think, I think the thing we need to do is try to figure out ways to get people involved, as we have, because I've heard, I've had more questions in this year than I've had in the previous six as a member of the committee. And that's a good thing. As I said from the very beginning, the normal people who sit around the table, the six of us, and the superintendent and the business manager. And I would maintain that eight people don't know all the answers, and we can definitely take suggestions and ideas from other people and try to apply them. Teresa?
Yeah, it just brings up the point of community engagement, which I think has been something that we've all felt is important. And this allows people to interact with each other during the meeting. You see quite often where a question was asked, and you might, you might miss it, and someone will answer it for them right in that thread. So I think that's a really, that's a really good thing, and I would, I would love to see that continue in whatever way we can keep that. You're on mute, Rich.
I would also add, Teresa, it has been an opportunity for administration. Like I have constantly seen principals on that chat. And so when somebody asks a particular question about, for example, the middle school, Heidi has been quick to give her response about how, what it's different or anything like that, the same with Lisa. And about MKG, so it's, it's the opportunity for them to interact too. So I think that's important. Mr. Rowe?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Just as I am leaving the committee, and one thing I have noticed, this online format does get us a lot of eyes. I'm hoping that you do continue broadcast on cable, but you also broadcast online as well. As many people over this pandemic have cut the cord to cable. So they don't get the normal local Channel 9 to watch our meetings anymore. So having a broadcast, I know that it's usually posted afterwards when we were live, when we were live in person. But if you can figure out a way to do that, I mean, with the new, new high school, I believe everything's, anything is possible with the amount of technology and Mr. Peltier and them over there can figure it out.
And that's part of the reason why we had talked about moving to the new high school for our meetings, because of the advanced technology. Meg, I saw your hand up, so I want to make sure you're called in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just think it's convenient. I know, you know, I have two little kids, and they're running around a lot of times, and as noisy as it can be, it's still more convenient for me to be sitting here at home than having to leave, find a sitter, make sure my husband's not on call, whatever it may be. So I think that there are a lot of other parents out there that are in the same boat, that yeah, they might have to go put kids to bed, but they can pop in and out of what it is that we're saying and know that we're going to talk about this first, so they're going to sit here for the 10, 20 minutes, and then they're going to go about their night. So it's just much more convenient for people, I think.
And so just to be clear, even though we are having the conversation next week, and we can look at different options or see, quite frankly, Rich, I don't know that there are other options available to us other than, if you will, the traditional Zoom format, or if you want, if you want to go that route where you allow people on. So I'm going to ask, have a conversation with Sean about that and Brian. But like I said, and as you guys saw in the note, the format that we currently have will continue until we decide to change it. So just so everybody knows, because that's, you know, and I agree, I think the biggest thing that we need to look, we know we'll get in person at some point. I also don't know that remote will be an option for members of the committee. And if we're in person, we still want to make opportunities, like everybody said, for other people to participate remotely and to watch it in a wide variety of ways, because the more people who watch it, there's more opportunities for sort of the next. Even if, even as long as you're hearing it and then responding the next day about ideas or thoughts. And I think that's just as good, because sometimes, I know, sometimes it's easier for me to sit through something and look at something and then figure out what I want to say after I thought about it for a little while, so. So any other questions about that before I move on? And so that's what I had for public comment. And with that, I'm going to bring in, I'm going to ask Sean to bring in Natalia for us. Natalia, I just want to say upfront, I'm going to say in my comments, but you did an excellent job in the candidates night, so thank you very much. And I will point out Mr. Oakley's candidates' night for his group Saturday for the votes, and the student council did a fantastic job. But I want to turn it over to you, Natalia.
Thank you. I love that. Thank you. So for this week's update for the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, on next Monday, March 29th, at 6:30 PM, Middleboro CPAC is hosting a virtual mental health expert panel. They want to help participants feel more comfortable with having conversations about mental health and to connect participants with resources and support. Numerous experts, numerous experts will be on the panel during this event. You can join, you can join this event on March 29th at mentalhealth.mcpac.org. For the MECS update, the MECS is very excited to have their cohort two and three students return to full in-person learning. The staff has been working very hard to prepare for this transition. And they have been flexible, creative, patient, and solution-oriented. Many students are looking forward to it, and many parents and guardians have expressed their gratitude. Mr. Goble wanted to recognize the custodians who have been very busy getting the building ready for this change. The HBB had, oh, sorry. For the MKG, MKG is very excited to have their cohort two and three students back to full in-person learning on April 5th. They have begun their stepathon fundraiser. MKG wanted to thank the PTA for getting everyone up and moving. And a final reminder that report cards will be sent out via Aspen tomorrow, Friday, March 26th at 3:00 PM. Then for HBB, besides the plans for bringing back the students, the other exciting news that HBB had was that they were awarded a $5,000 grant from the Math Cultural Council to work with Jayman Keita from Placental Engineers. All remote classes will have the opportunity to work with Jay on science and engineering-related projects through the remainder of the year. They are very excited about this opportunity and feel fortunate to be able to bring something fun to the students who remain fully remote. HBB's new staff member, Prince, started this week. He is the new service dog who's working with Mrs. Doak, the adjustment counselor. For Nichols Middle School, NMS had a successful week of March Madness. Many students and staff showed their school spirit by wearing crazy outfits, fun socks, and hats. Thank you to the student council members for planning this fun week. Spring baseball and softball have begun at Nichols Middle School, and they are happy to welcome the new baseball coach, Eric D'Souza. NMS is ready for the full return of students, grades six to eight, for April 5th. They're excited to have almost everyone back together. The NMS PTA, in conjugation with Mrs. Enos and Miss Rich, have planned a virtual 5K for the week of May 2nd to May 9th. Entries for this event can be found on Eventbrite or NMS Facebook page. The NMS PTA would like to thank the person who entered them into the Box Top Sweepstakes, as they were awarded $20,000 in their Box Top account. For the MHS update, anyone interested in trying out for the MHS baseball program is invited to come help with the Middleboro League Cleanup Day on Saturday, March 27th at 9:00 AM. The event will take place at the Field of Dreams. Please bring gloves and/or a rake if you can, and these hours will count towards your community service requirement for graduation. Please see Coach Porter with any questions. The next student council meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March 31st, and this is the second meeting where we will have guest speaker J.C. Paul. For all members of the student council, the MASCE statewide conference will be held on Friday, April 9th and Saturday, April 10th. You can sign up to attend the student council, on the student council Google classroom. For all members of the class of 2022 who have registered for the in-school SAT session, the testing will occur on Tuesday, April 13th. And finally, there is still a tutoring opportunity from the MHS National Honor Society for extra help in any subject. Fill out the Google form that can be found on Brendan's bulletin or reach out to Amy Head or Mrs. Bluey for any questions. Thank you.
As always, thank you, Natalia. Does anyone have any questions for Natalia? Greg, go right ahead.
I just, I also have a comment. I want to thank Natalia and the other students who we've had present. I'm always amazed at how well they do, whether it was in person, when we were in the auditorium, or virtually like this. They come so well-prepared, and they know everything that's going on in the district. We, we get official updates all the time, but they still know more about what's going on than we do, so it's great to hear from them. So thank you, Natalia, for all the time you've been putting in.
Any other questions for Natalia? So Natalia, again, we know it's not ideal, but you've been doing a great job, so thank you very, very much. With that, I will turn it over to, no problem. I will turn it over to anyone who has anything from the committee. I do want to say, again, I want to thank Mr. Oakley and the people at Saturdays Are For the Votes for running the candidates night. They did a great job. Student council participated, and again, wrote some great questions for the candidates. I obviously participated. I enjoyed it immensely. Very thankful that other, lots of candidates attended, and even, even if it didn't work out technically, it was great. For example, Mr. Rosenthal attended via phone, so he could answer questions for people. So Rich, great job, and I would just want to say thank you for that. And with that, does anyone else have anything they want to mention? Mr. Oakley?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and it was really just a reiteration of what you said. But I just want to thank all the candidates for coming, and I thought we got some really great interaction. I want to thank the student council, Anna DeBona, Natalia, Mia. I thought it was great. And we have shared the video right now on our Saturdays Are For the Votes Facebook page and also on our YouTube. But thanks to a collaboration with McCam, we're going to get that rebroadcast, and I just need to figure out a way to get them a file. But as soon as we do, I'll post it on our, on our Facebook, and hopefully that'll be rebroadcast a couple of times, assuming that they have space for us. So yeah, just a big, huge shout out to everyone that helped put it together.
Sounds great. Anybody else have anything? Well, seeing no one, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lynch with the superintendent's report. Mr. Lynch, before you even start, we do have one question for you. And the questions came in already, and I think it's one of the more important questions we've seen. It says, is Prince going to be shared throughout the school or just with HBB?
I believe Prince is a service dog at HBB, but may visit other areas in the complex. But at this point, it's an HBB therapy assistant at this point. So I actually had a chance to visit with Prince this afternoon for half an hour and, and sit with Aaron Adok, and then walk out in the hall and watch a bus dismissal at the Henry B. Berkland. And all the kids were just so excited, and even there was, after the buses left, there was probably about 10 faculty members circled around Prince the dog, giving their greetings and gushing over very handsome Yellow Lab, who is very bright and very well-trained, and I think it's a great addition to the, to the school and to the school system, and it's something that might be the start of something even larger, so.
Thank you for answering that, and I'll turn it over to you, Brett.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Good evening. This evening, as promised, we're going to take a much deeper dive into some additional details of our full return in person for learning for kindergarten through eighth grade. As you know, last week, we had some, some general comments and some summaries. But this week, we have our frontline folks who are going to present details on exactly what's going on in different parts of the school system, especially specifically schools, our four K through eight schools, and also some information on technology, and also some information on the before and after school childcare program with Champions. We'll begin with Dr. Gates, who will then move on to Mr. Thompson and Ms. White, and then we'll move on to Jeremy Goble, and then Heidi Latenda, and then back to Melanie Gates, and then ultimately Sarah Hickey will talk about Champions. So that's sort of the summary of a slideshow that we're going to present for the public this evening. We're not going to get into specific, specific details, but it's going to be fairly well-detailed. You'll get an idea of exactly what the survey results indicated for each school and how that ended up for each school. And I think you'll get a lot of the answers that perhaps you were looking for last week that we didn't have detail for at that time. But this is the fashion we're moving forward with. So I'd begin to invite Dr. Gates in, sort of to talk about the reconfiguration, the reorganization for reopening, sort of our three Rs tonight, and, and then that'll be followed again by updates for schools. But right now, I introduce to you Dr. Gates. Dr. Gates, please.
Thank you, Superintendent Lynch. Good evening, school committee members and those watching us online. I'd like to begin by sharing or addressing the question that was asked last time, which is, why do we need that remote week? And if we could advance the slide, please. Why do we need these remote days? If you take a look at the picture that's presented here, this is just one glimpse of why we need these remote days. This is a picture of a typical classroom that we are currently using for storage due to the numerous amount of changes that we had to do to accommodate our initial return to school this fall. Next slide, please. We had to move a lot of school equipment around in order to create new learning spaces, such as that featured here, where the HBB gym had been converted into two different classroom spaces, where we not only had to move furniture into those spaces, we had to move the interactive projectors known as BrightLinks as well. That space is now going to be deconstructed and turned into a cafeteria space to the benefit of the Berkland. Next slide, please. In the next slide, what you'll see is what is the HBB cafeteria currently. You'll notice the shelving from the HBB library is lining, it's creating a barrier there in the HBB cafeteria, which was also turned into two classroom spaces. We need to move those, that furniture out and put them into a classroom, and then reconfigure the cafeteria in order to accommodate the lunch needs for both HBB and MKG. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the HBB library. Where are the books, you say? Well, those are creating a barrier in the HBB cafeteria currently. We needed to convert that library into a classroom space, and now that classroom space is going to be converted into a cafeteria. The classroom that is there is going to have to be moved into another space into the Berkland, which those spaces are typically occupied with material that we're storing, such as filing cabinets, extra desks and chairs, a lot of the, and also a lot of the furniture that you see in elementary classrooms. They tend to have reading nooks. They have their classroom libraries and other types of furniture aside. and other types of furniture aside from student desks and a teacher desk in the classroom. So that in of itself is a major reorganization effort. Next slide, please. What you'll see in this next one is a picture of the HBB auditorium, which that was also converted into a classroom space and it also serves as a place for storage. In order for us to prepare for our full return for our kids, we need to move that classroom. We need to move a lot of the items that are being stored because we intend on using the auditorium for mass breaks, snacks, and having it as a, as a small group workspace, which you wouldn't think an auditorium being small group workspace, but we're using every nook and cranny that we have possible in order to ensure the safety, well-being, and learning of all students in our district. Next slide, please. And here's just a picture of some additional classroom spaces that exist at the complex. And you'll see something similar at MECC with their auditorium space that they're using to store furniture. In order to accommodate the distancing needs, we needed to move equipment out and we had limited storage space as it is, so that those, that furniture and various supplies have been moved into these classrooms. We now need to occupy these classrooms, so we need to move that equipment out. And really, the only way to do this is if the school is not occupied. It's not something that we can just do on this upcoming weekend while we're preparing to have our kids come back. We really need to have the building unoccupied leading up to our full return because we can't disrupt what's currently going on in our schools in order to make these changes. We need to make the changes as we're preparing to fully re-enter into our schools. Next slide, please. And here's another example of work that needs to be done. This is a classroom at MKG, but we have two similar classrooms at HBB. You may notice where there's the clock hanging in between the room there. You'll see kind of a wood casing. There's actually a movable wall that goes in that space. So traditionally, that is two classrooms. We had configured this to be one learning space, which meant that we had to connect the two BrightLinks projectors so that they were mirroring each other so that students on either side of the room would be seeing the same things on our boards. So we have to undo the cabling that we did for that. And of course, we can't do that while school is in session. We do not want to disrupt the learning that is going on. Next slide, please. Not only do we have a lot of things that need to be moved out, we've got a lot of things that need to be built as well. Recently Superintendent Lynch acquired for us 578 additional student desks. They just arrived on March 16th. You can see the photo on the right of some boxes. Those are the boxes that contain the new desks. These need to be unboxed. They need to be put together. And you can see Mr. Covell there, the HBB head custodian. He is putting together the desks and he's adjusting the height of the desk so that they can be based upon the average height of the student at each particular grade level. Not only are they constructed, they're also sanitized and then need to be moved into classroom spaces. That work has been going on since those desks have arrived. But again, we are somewhat limited as to what we can reconfigure due to the fact that the school facility is, school facilities are being occupied currently. Next slide, please. What you see here is a picture of Mrs. Colleen Randall's classroom. Thank you, Mrs. White, for bringing me there to visit Mrs. Randall's room. It was great to connect with our first graders, who I just want to share. We're super excited about being able to come back to school five days a week. But this picture here just shows to you how the teacher workspace, which is the blue desk on the left, is located towards the front of the room where the BrightLinks is. In order to provide our teachers with the social distance needed for their safety, we have to provide them a minimum of a six-foot swath of space at the front of the room. Now, if we could go to the next slide, it'll show one of the challenges that we face. Due to the age of this facility down at the complex, where the data, power, and connections are for our BrightLinks are not next to the BrightLinks. They're not at the front of the room. So in this picture here, you can see with the arrow, it's pointing to where the wall plates are for data, power, and BrightLinks connectivity. In order to keep our teachers and our students safe, we would be moving those teacher workstations towards the front of the room by the BrightLinks, which means that we have to rework connections for data, power, and the connection to the BrightLinks. We're not looking to do a massive overhaul of the electrical work at the complex, so we do have a very viable plan in order to move the teacher workstation and provide access to the technology accordingly. But that's just an example of another challenge that, that we are facing that, again, we cannot address until we're able to move the furniture and get things set up. And a lot of those movements really cannot take place until we are able to have full access to the building without having to worry about maintaining configuration for the current model. And we can transition directly into our setup for our full return. And while I'm talking about technology, I'm just going to share this now as what our plan is or our line of thinking as we are planning for our full return. As, as you know, all of our students have access to a device to support their remote learning. We want to keep the access to devices viable because we need to be prepared in case we need to pivot back to remote learning in any capacity or if any of our children need to quarantine or isolate as a result of COVID. So we want to be sure that our kids still have access to their devices. We're asking that our kindergarten students, for the time being, keep their technology, their school-issued technology at home. For our first through fifth grade students who have been issued a school device, we're going to ask our children to bring those devices into the classroom and store them in the classroom because we will need to use technology in order to engage with such platforms as STMA, which I know our kids love. They love seeing Gigi and accomplishing those different puzzles. And we want to be able to provide access to our children for that. Now, when those devices will be brought in, we're going to determine that at a school level. But we do wish for our kids to bring those devices into school. The devices will continue to be accessible and assigned to the specific students so that they can use the technology assigned to them. That will help us with minimizing any sort of cross-contamination. But don't you worry, we have a sanitation plan in place for our devices, regardless if they're being shared or just used individually. Of course, as we have done throughout the pandemic, we will maintain appropriate hand hygiene. We will reiterate that with the use of technology. If by any chance, students are sharing a device or just as general practice, we also have purchased a large volume of computer cleaning wipes that are safe to use on non-glass laptops or Chromebook displays, because if you use a typical bleach wipe on those displays, it can damage the screen. So we did, we have made the effort to buy those wipes. We continue to have hand sanitizer on hand. So we will be able to ensure that our technology is treated appropriately and kept sanitized and safe for our students, faculty, and staff. Now, our middle schoolers, they've been bringing their devices back and forth all year long, and they've been doing a great job. And because they've shown such care and responsibility for the technology, we're going to ask that our middle schoolers continue to bring those devices to and from school each day. We will continue to offer our Bring Your Own Device initiative. So if students have not yet signed up for that and they do wish to do so, we will make that opportunity available to you. And in order to make sure that we continue to provide access to internet, in the case of a need for remote learning, we will continue to keep our hotspots deployed out with our families who are currently using them in order to make sure that if we do need to provide remote learning, that access is not an issue whatsoever. So I just wanted to share with you some highlights of why the remote days are important. As you can see from the pictures, largely from the complex, and we certainly have some work that needs to be done at MECC as well. It's a large amount of work that needs to be done there to get our school configured in the way that we think is best to maintain social distance for all within our school community. And we just need time to be able to do that, that reconfiguring. And by being able to do the remote week, K through eight, we'll have the good fortune of being able to reallocate some of Mr. Hutchinson's crew in order to help with the largest areas of need, which do happen to be at the complex. Speaking with Sean a little earlier this evening, and we're going to be taking on the task of doing a lot of the recabling, so to speak, to make sure that our teachers have access to their BrightLinks, to the internet and to power up at the front where their teaching station is. So there's a lot of work at hand. And we're, we're ready and excited to do it because we're really happy to be welcoming back our kindergarten through eighth grade students. If there's no questions for me, we can certainly transition to Mr. Thompson, who's here to give us an overview of the Henry B. Berkland.
I think there's a couple of questions, Melanie. So Meg, you had a question before Melanie transitions?
So it's not so much of a question, it's more of a comment or statement. I think when you say, "Oh, we need the space. We need the time. We need to do these things." Yeah, okay, fine, you need it. But when you see it in a picture and you can actually visualize it, it makes it much more tangible. So the fact that you've noticed that those pictures, I'm really appreciative of. But I just want to thank all the tech people. They're going to be doing all kinds of work over the next two weeks and especially the maintenance crews, because they are just going to be non-stop for the next two weeks. I know that they already have been. But just having to assemble all the desks, that in itself is going to take them a day. So they're going to be putting in a lot of hours. So I just really wanted to thank them for all of them.
Thank you, Mrs. Janess. And that was just a small sample of picturing. That's not every space that, that needs to have some TLC or or reorganization done, but it just gives you just a smattering of the challenges that we're facing. But thank you for that.
Melanie, one question that came in. Will there be school devices available for elementary students who do not bring their own in?
Thank you for that question, Mr. Chair. And I do see that came in through Facebook. So thank you to the community member who shared that. You know, we are facing a multitude of challenges with tech. We do have the tech on hand, so that is, that's not an excuse. And I'm not here to give anyone excuses, but I wish to also represent the community that we're preparing to open a 21st century high school, that the tech department has a large responsibility for installing the equipment there. So we're dealing with these two major initiatives at the same time while also continuing to support the day-to-day. We will do our best to get the technology out that is needed in the classroom. You know, honestly, I hope that as we are back full in-person learning, we have much less of a reliance on technology in the classroom. We need this time to engage. Oh, sorry, the lights just went out in my office. It happens when I stand still too often. So far, we probably stand here away with our hands. Yeah. So we will, we'll do our best to get the technology out there, but I hope there's not a reliance upon it. Our kids deserve the opportunity to engage with each other and their teacher in a more personal way than just through the technology. But we will be doing our best to provide what is needed to support the learning for all students.
Thank you, Melanie. Other questions before Melanie transitions to Derek? Mr. Ralph?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I just have a kind of a follow-up with those devices. Like, my daughter uses our device here at home. And you said that the ones from the school would go back for them to use in school. Will she have a device to use in school when they get on Gigi or? Because she's not bringing one back in. Yeah.
And that's where we'll do our best to get some more technology out. And that's also why we need to make sure that we have the sanitation protocols in place if we are sharing technology. You know, there will be a period of time where there will more than likely have to be sharing because you know, we're a small tech department and we have quite a, quite a task at hand with what we have going on. And again, it's not excuses, it's just reality. We don't shirk from the responsibilities. We'll rise up as we have over the course of this year, but it's, I just want to be fully transparent with where we're at, but we will make sure that children that need access will have access, whether it's through sharing and our sanitization of the devices or deploying additional, additional devices. Which we are, we have been prepping the Chromebooks for, but that has been a focus on making sure that they're ready for MCAS, so we're configuring them in a way to be able to support grade-level testing, not deploying them at a, like a classroom level. But you know, we will continue to evaluate our model and adjust accordingly.
And I have a follow-up.
Good, Greg. Good, Greg.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank you for all those photos and laying that out piece by piece. You know, I knew it was, you know, rough to move all that kind of stuff, but to see exactly what you had to do was so enlightening for, for us and the others. So I appreciate that so, so, so much that you did that work.
It was a lot of Mr. Thompson's photographic skills, so thanks, Eric.
Good. And another, another question I just have with those devices, if the elementary students are bringing them in. And we have a worst-case scenario where you have a close contact in someone's classroom and that class goes remote. How will the elementary schools get those devices back if they're leaving them at school?
It's a great question, and thank you for that. We certainly thought about that. And that's why we are not like collecting the devices to, to keep them. We're bringing them into school for use, but we're going to continue to have that device assigned to the, to the child that currently has it. So in the case that that child has to quarantine, isolate, et cetera, we know that we have a device for them. Now, if that, if that conclusion is arrived at while they're in school, that we determine that this child needs to quarantine, then certainly we can take that device, bundle it up, and send it home with the child. If the situation occurs outside of school and the child isn't with us when we determine that, then we will work together with the child's teacher, with the building administration, to make sure that that device can be picked up and made available to the family to support remote learning during that time period.
Excellent. Thank you.
Teresa, you had a question?
Yeah, just more of an observation. I was just curious, is there a particular reason why the kindergartners are not needing to bring them back? Or is it just more because you're concerned that maybe they're youth, they're so young that that might be more of a concern? I was just curious.
We don't have a large extent of digital curriculum at K. And just the modality of instruction that our teachers prefer does not have a reliance on, on technology. And I think for these kids, particularly as they're getting into transition to five days back, I guarantee you those kids are going to be exhausted in the first week. It's going to be like going to school. It's almost like the first day of school. I think Derek and I were having that conversation earlier. The first day of school all over again. Kids are going to be exhausted. We're going to have to be working on, you know, again, kind of those first day of school routines and building in that culture. But there's not a reliance on tech at the MECC. And I just didn't think it was, at this time, to ask our kindergartners to bring those in. I just didn't think the timing would be appropriate right now, given that there isn't a huge demand for the use of technology in those classrooms.
Sure. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Rich, you had a question. Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you very much, Dr. Gates, for the presentation and for all the work. And it struck me while you were talking about all the stuff that needed to be done, that I think generally when people decide on what size team they need to get their work done, it's based on, you know, what the world looks like at that moment. And the fact that all this extra work is coming, I just wondered if, if there was any opportunity or possibility for you to accept volunteers? Because I'd gladly come down on lunch breaks and help you guys run some wire if you, if you need it. Obviously, Corey's and, you know, trying not to have extra people in the schools is important, but, but is there any opportunity for that?
I could certainly consider that. You know, when it comes to some of the technology, if it's anything that requires any onboarding of devices, that would require access to things within our network, which I wouldn't feel comfortable doing at a volunteer level. But, you know, we can certainly consider the landscape of some of the other tasks that need to be completed. And, you know, if you want to run some HDMI's and stuff with Sean and I, I'll shoot you a text and let you know.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you for the offer.
Any other questions for Dr. Gates? Seeing none, thank you, Dr. Gates. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And now I'd like to introduce Mr. Derek Thompson, principal of the Henry B. Berkland Elementary School, who's going to talk about what's going on at the Berkland. Mr. Thompson, welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, so I guess I'll start tonight just saying that we are very excited to be talking about bringing the kids back five days a week. This has been a very challenging calendar year, as I know you all know. And it's a step towards normal. So we had a staff meeting today after school. I know my staff are excited. As you can see through those pictures, there's a lot of work to be done, but we're, we're really looking forward to, to getting kids back, doing what we need to do. I saw one of the questions too, is where is all the stuff going to go? We're getting very creative. We have some spots we're going to be moving things around to, so it's going to be a busy week, but an exciting week at the same time. So I think our first slide is about enrollment here, just to give you a little breakdown of where we are at. It worked out pretty well for us in terms of adjusting classes. We have 80 kids that are remaining remote. Most of our requests were kids that were fully remote that wanted to come back. We had three of those in first grade, 12 in second, seven in third, fourth grade, and 10 kids requesting to come back in fifth grade. There were 35 total. We had one student requesting to go from hybrid to remote, so talking 34 kids. So we were able to keep all of the kids that were in the hybrid cohort and cohort one with their teacher, which I know was, I got flooded with emails and concern, from concerned parents about that. And, you know, it was And, you know, it was tough at first cuz we couldn't promise anything, but we worked to try to make sure we could maintain classroom teachers as much as possible. So really, the only kids that are changing classroom teachers are those kids that were fully remote that are coming back. Um, because most of our fully remote classrooms are still intact. We are collapsing one classroom in second grade. Um, but other than that, everything's staying the same. So uh, that's it with enrollments. We move over to our first slide. Um, in our attempt to simplify a somewhat complex process, kinda break down a few of the big things that I guess we are uh wrestling with or or that we did wrestle with and figured out. And I, you know, tell you that we've been thinking about this since the beginning of the year about what we're gonna do in order to get the kids to come back. So um, really, a couple of our big challenges were classroom setups, obviously. Um, and having new desks is uh very helpful for us to set the classrooms up and make sure we can ma- maintain appropriate distancing, which um, we're gonna be able to do in the classes. Uh, the big thing was really rainy days, uh figuring out snacks and mask breaks. We're gonna be outside a lot, so when the weather's nice, it's not as much of a challenge for us as it's going to be on rainy days. So coming up with a schedule for where we're going to uh have snack, as an example. So we're converting our gymnasium into cafeteria, because uh Mary Kay Good needs cafeteria space, they're gonna use our cafeteria. We're moving down into the gymnasium. Um, so we're gonna eat snack in the gymnasium as well. That, that's important for us because every space needs to be wiped off after kids eat snacks. So we couldn't just go eating snack in the auditorium or uh spaces like that. And then obviously, on rainy days, finding spots where we can have kids be at six feet of space and take mask breaks was a bit of a challenge. But we're gonna be able to use our media center, our auditorium, and then um eventually, I believe, we're gonna have a tent as well. So we're gonna have plenty of space for kids to take mask breaks throughout the day, even on days where it's rainy. Uh, plenty of space for kids to eat snack, or also, you know, in terms of eating lunch. So that would, those were really some of our biggest um challenges. We're gonna do everything we can to eliminate as many transitions as possible. That includes uh making sure that specials happen in the classroom, so special subjects uh teachers are gonna travel to the classroom, uh which is a practice we've been doing since the beginning of the year. Our next slide is a breakdown of our cafeteria, um, as it looks before we put it together. Um, our plan is that we have plenty of space. We have enough room in there for a hundred and fifty desks. We're not gonna have a hundred. We're gonna have desks in there, each kid's gonna eat at their own separate location. We're gonna have assigned seats. Classrooms are going to be um separated out, we're gonna have plastic dividers um to to separate out walking areas and where classrooms are going to be. And kids are essentially, we talked about this in my staff meeting today, are gonna be sitting in the same format that they're sitting in their classroom as much as possible. So that, you know, in the case that we do have a close contact situation, we're not expanding the number of kids that become close contact, that if they're sitting next to two kids, or the same two kids are gonna be sitting next to in the lunchroom as well. Um, so, you know, desks will be assigned, they'll be wiped down in between every meal. Uh, we have plenty of space, honestly. Uh, lunch is really not a problem for us. Um, we couldn't give you an exact layout of how it's gonna look, because as you could see, we're currently using that space as classroom space. So we need to get the kids out of there, so that we can move everything out of there and then start setting it up like, like our cafeteria. But um, that's where we're at with that. So our next slide is really just about traffic flow and transitions. This is my last slide. This is actually somewhat easy for us, we've been practicing this all year. If you've had a chance to visit our building, you'd see there's spots all over the hallway marking six feet of space in the hallway. Um, even though we can have kids at three feet, we put the markers at six. Um, so the kids know whenever we stop, kids find a different marker along the hallway. Um, keeping kids on the right side of the hallway and both ends. At the elementary level, we don't go anywhere without lining kids up anyway. It's a normal practice of ours, so um making sure that there's no congregate opportunities for our kids is somewhat easy for us to do. Um, little tricky figuring out buses, we're gonna enter the building through a different area, but, you know, each grade's gonna enter the building through a different space. We're gonna have staff assigned um throughout to make sure the kids are getting lined up right when they come off the buses, right when they come in from drop off and are kept distance from one another and brought right to the classrooms. Uh, I really don't foresee there being any issues uh in that regard for us. And like I said before, we're taking some steps to eliminate some transitions as well in the building. In the way that we were able to locate our classrooms, um, eliminate what is often a potential issue for us, which is we share a gymnasium and a couple spaces with Mary Kay Good, and we end up crossing paths throughout the day. And that's when we end up having essentially traffic jams. Um, but we're not gonna have that issue. Our classrooms are separate from anywhere Mary Kay Good's gonna be. So um, I I think uh we have a pretty solid plan in place for that too. So that's all I had for my slides. I think uh, Mrs. White was up next.
Okay, next I would bring up Lisa White from MKG. And then after her discussion, then we can take questions at the complex level, if that's okay with the school committee, Mr. Chair?
Good evening, everybody. Nice to see everyone. Very excited. This has been something we've been kinda planning for since September with the hopes that we would get to actually do this. So it's, it's so exciting. Everyone's very, very thrilled. Um, you know, it was saying goodbye to our, our cohort two kids and and saying, you know, when we see you, it's gonna be kind of an everyday, and we can't wait. So, oh, thank you for this opportunity. So the first slide, please, is our enrollment slide. So as you can see, um, we have kids uh coming in, we have only, um, we, we did have four kids. Oh, I did get a parent uh email today, one of our students that was going to go hybrid, um, um, excuse me, that was hybrid, that was going to go full remote um, has changed mine, so I haven't updated this cuz I got it very late uh when I was leaving um to uh full in-person. Um, we can certainly accommodate these changes. All of our hybrid uh students will remain in their full, with their teachers for full uh return. Um, in grade one, we had two sections of remote. One of our teachers will be returning, so there was a bit of a, a shuffle uh there. Um, so that was um, letters did go out for all of those families, and they should have received them. And if certainly you have any questions, please contact me regarding um anyone's class placement. But as you can see, twenty, twenty-six cohort one students, um, we had three hundred and, excuse me, four hundred and thirty-eight students that were hybrid, a hundred and five in full remote, and now with our full return, four sixty-four and seventy-seven. So we, we are very confident that we can fit everyone in the building. Next slide, please. So uh, Mr. Thompson and I have worked closely together, as you know, all the time, and especially with something, you know, with this important. It's important to make sure that, you know, we're, you know, we're always similar, but but different. We always say that to each other. Uh, so our MKG students will be eating, as you've heard from Mr. Thompson, in the HBB cafeteria socially distanced at six feet. Uh, we can fit a hundred and twenty students um between the cafeteria and their library. Um, our highest lunch shift uh is one oh nine, so that will fit no problem. Uh, snacks will be in assigned uh classrooms or um in the uh cafeteria, MKG cafeteria socially distanced. Um, some of our students will be eating in their classrooms. I am keeping, I have a, the double rooms, and some of our kiddos will be able to eat in their classrooms at, at, at um the six feet apart. And this is just to help with less kids transitioning in the cafeteria. Uh, mask breaks will be um in the MKG cafeteria, adjoining classrooms or in the tent for rainy days. But otherwise, we'll be outside for our, our mask breaks. Specialists will be in the classroom with no traveling, which will limit our transitions. And um specials will be available for our remote classes as well. Next slide, please. So as you can see, with our configuration of the HBB cafeteria, we have plenty of space. Um, all, um, I spoke with Mr. Hutchinson today, and we're going to label each chair, similar to how um Mr. Thompson is also doing it at HBB. Each child at each lunch shift will have an assigned seat, which will also mimic their in-class seating. So that will, i- if a child needs to go out, it will limit the number of students around that child that would need to go out. So we have plenty of space um for our students. They will sit also by class with dividers between each of the classes as well. Next slide, please. And here's our MKG cafeteria. For when we go in for snack, we can fit forty-five students um in the MKG cafeteria. So that will be plenty of space um for classes to go in for um a mask break if we should need it for rain. We're hoping for no rain. Next slide, please. So the building and the classrooms are marked, as Mr. Thompson stated, with, on the floor, that indicate, you know, lining up and how far apart we need to be, along with um the arrows of the, you know, which direction up one side and down the other of the, of the corridors. Um, specials, like I said, are in the classrooms to eliminate transitions. Arrival and dismissal uh will change a little bit, because we're also gonna be having breakfast in the HBB cafeteria. So when students come off the buses, we will have a uh staff member that will be escorting students to the HBB cafeteria if they wish to have breakfast. Um, we already have lines set up that um, that are painted, that students, that are socially distanced, that students will be lining up and they will be escorted into the building by staff, of course socially distanced. Um, where we already have established entrance and exit doors for the flow when students exit and enter the building for things like mask breaks and to keep the flow, so students aren't passing each other in those, in those doorways, so that will keep that flow of traffic going. Um, as I said, uh, we will have the dividers and stu- uh seats will be um assigned in the cafeteria as well for our students. Thank, thank you.
Okay, now, Mr. Chair, are there any questions from the committee for the two principals at the complex?
So I'm gonna, th- there's a couple of questions that came in, Ryan, through the um chat that I was sort of gonna ask. But I would, I would say this to people, if you're, if you're asking about specific teachers and specific uh changes, I would contact the principals directly um to have a conversation with them. But it, it's around um teachers changing classrooms, and so I was hoping that you could talk a little on that. There's a question about, um, it seems to this person like a teacher's uh uh, you're removing a teacher from classroom that is not really losing many students and giving them to a teacher whose class is mostly returning. And then uh the same thing from the other person, that there is, there seems to be some shift in teaching where it, it, it to them doesn't make sense. So I just, if you could talk in sort of general terms about making changes to classrooms and things like that to both of you? Cuz I think the question is about tho- those grade levels, that's why I'm asking that to you guys.
The, for MKG, it's, it was in first grade, and um that was due, uh district decisions were made um in accordance with things that we had to follow, so that's why those decisions were made at that level.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. And again, if people have specific questions, they can always contact you, right, Lisa?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. All right. Um, uh, first of all, I wanna thank you both, because I know how, well, I know how crazy this whole year has been. Uh, but then to suddenly shift focus and make it so that everyone can return who wants to return, I really thank you both of you, as I thank all the administrators. Um, I think, I think you guys have done an excellent job. You sort of planned out, um, obviously to the best that you possibly could. As we know, there will be things that come up, and we also know that in a lot of ways, better weathered days make things to go easier, right? Um, so if we, you know, if it stays sixty like this till the end of school, that'd be fantastic, because then kids can be outside more, people can take mask breaks outside as, you know, there's a wide variety of things that we can do that we can't do when it pours up. Um, so I wanna thank you all for that, but I, so I don't have many questions. I thought both the plans were very detailed and explained a lot of what people had asked for, so thank you. Um, any particular questions of these guys? Mr. Rowe, go ahead, you can start.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. First, I wanna thank you guys. This is, this is a plan. This is exactly what we were hoping to see. Um, and you guys have knocked it out of the park. This is every, every little detail, like I, I've been jotting down notes, and you're answering the questions before I can even get them down. The, the one question I did had, and this is a more procedural thing, and I know you guys have the answer to this, um, because you've, you've hinted at it. With the students going to different areas for snack and for lunch and things like that, before, I'm it's been more of a teacher responsibility to take care of their own kids. But now that they're going into these common spaces, like how often will the snack room in the cafeteria be cleaned? And is it gonna be either the teacher's responsibility or custodial?
I don't know if you want me to jump in?
Go ahead, you can, yeah, go ahead.
Um, so we have staff assigned to the cafeteria uh during lunches, so we have lunch monitors that really supervise the cleaning in between um each meal. In between snacks, we're, you know, it's gonna be partially administration, partially teachers. We'll still have the same cleaning materials down there, but we're, you know, we, we don't have the cafeteria monitors in there during snack time. Both buildings, we scheduled snack time outside of the um lunch window that we have uh available. So basically, the cafeterias are gonna be used all day, especially on a rainy day. It's just gonna be cycling one group in and, and another group out. Mr. Thomas and I met today just talking about, you know, the need to get down there as much as we possibly can be down there supervised, making sure the transitions are happening smoothly, smoothly. So rainy days definitely gonna be more challenges, no doubt about it, a few additional steps. But, you know, I, I appreciate the um, you know, that, that, the kind words, but, you know, really need to send out kudos to the teachers in our building. They've been amazing. Um, you know, a lot of the ideas, you know, we're not, we don't have everything even ironed out. They've gotten so creative, they keep finding new solutions to new challenges throughout the whole thing. Um, you know, so some of this, we're laying out on a plan, and I'm pretty confident we'll get into it and they'll come forward with a different way or some adjustment to make it a little bit more efficient. But they've been great about understanding the importance of, you know, following the rules that we're putting forward and uh, you know, taking it seriously, and uh, they, they, they've just, but I can't say enough good things about how the staff have responded to this.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we, we had a, our teacher leaders kinda, you know, took the ball and and met with their, their individual teams and really came up with, you know, their thoughts and ideas, which really was, it was, I mean, it, it was priceless for us to be able to put that plan together with, with their thoughts and their ideas. Um, you know, things, today, one of our, one of my teachers got me regarding something, and it was a great idea. I'm like, let's go, let's go for it. I, I think, you know, they've just been so excited and thrilled, and they wanna be back too. So I think their, their planning and has been very helpful, so helpful.
Thank you.
Mr. Oakley, go ahead.
Sure, I just, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to echo what Mr. Rowe said, and I think um, you know, we always hear that uh great pressure over time creates things like diamonds. And um, that's ob- obviously very cool, but it also makes things cook faster in my hot pot in my kitchen. And so um, I just wanted to just thank you guys so much, and Mr. Lynch and his team, and Dr. Gates and everyone, and all of you and all your teachers for, for really just, like Mr. Rowe said, knocking it out of the park. I mean, these details make me feel all warm and fuzzy, and um, I so appreciate it. Um, I, I did actually have a question, though, and it was just around um the uh, the enrollment numbers for, for MKG. And if I'm reading right, it looks like um, we had, uh, let me see, where are my notes here? Um, it looks like we had uh, uh, let's see, um, twenty, uh, initially with the, the hybrid model, we had twenty-six in cohort one and thirty-eight in hybrid, um, which, which I count to be four sixty-four, and then a hundred and five remote. But where we went from a hundred and five remote down to seventy-seven, I'm coming up with a, a, a difference of twenty-eight students. And I'm, I'm guessing it's probably just uh, uh, like an old version or something.
Yeah, it's actually been cha- it's literally been changing. I've had, that was done. We've had, I've gotten emails from families that have changed their minds, so I'm continuously updating it continuously.
Sure, thank you, I figured.
Anything else? Uh, again, thank you both so very, very much, uh, and, you know, your staff too. I feel badly because, you know, this has been sort of a weird year, and um, I don't get to walk the schools as much as I have in the past. So it, it just feels, it feels so disconnected, so I do wanna thank uh you guys for all that you're doing. And your staffs too, because they, they've been working wonders over and over and over again, so we appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would like to address, there's a apparent question in there, a, a sort of a, a a comment on, um, Sean, if you could put that back up, please. There was a comment on the district decision with regard to who came back from being remote teachers in online learning academy. The online learning academy was set up with our own teachers, which was a real valuable piece to us. Uh, and what happened was And what happened was the teachers that went out first were based on health issues, whether they were personal health issues or family-related health issues and comorbidities, et cetera. So those teachers' requests were honored as much, in as much as we could. There were also those remote classes that we had to create. And we had to ask for teachers to go remote and ask for volunteers to go remote and in some cases, assign remote teachers. Well, what happens with the teachers association is when you sit down and, and work out details with them as part of negotiations is that we agreed that we'd go in reverse order. It just made sense of how they went out. So that those volunteers and those, those people that volunteered or those people that were asked to teach remote classes who didn't necessarily want to were brought back in first. And that first grade class at MKG was collapsed first. So that's why those students ended up with a different teacher. If they came back into class, if they came back from fully remote into the, into the, into the fully in person, they end up with a different teacher also. The only ones we could guarantee were those cohort two and cohort three students who were in school and we, they ended up with the same teacher. But in signing a memorandum of agreement with the teachers association, that's basically what we agreed to. It made sense. That's how we selected teachers to go out for the online learning academy. And that's the reverse order of them coming back in. And I understand that a child's teacher changing in the middle of the year or near the end of the year is not a happy thing for a family. I, I certainly understand that. But we tried to explain this as we've gone through these meetings, that there would be some of these changes that might not be pleasing for folks, but that had to be made, decisions that had to be made on the part of the district to make this work. So that's, this is the result of that unfortunately. And like I said, it does not, it is a district decision. It is a memorandum of agreement we made with the teachers. Our teachers have been excellent about this entire process. And this is just something that was part of that process. And, and that's just an explanation of how that went and how that process went. And that's why that student and that family go to another teacher who's hundred percent highly qualified licensed teacher in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It's just a different individual, unfortunately, for the remainder of the year, if that's the choice that they made as a family. I hope that understands, that explains that question. And, and so you have a comment on that, Mr. Chair?
No, I just want to thank you for saying that. And I would add that, you know, we spent a lot of time on this particular topic at the beginning of the year. As we spent at the end of, you know, as we move into this phase. So this was, as you said, a negotiated settlement between us. And quite honestly, it makes sense. It, you know, I understand where it would be problematic for families. But it's how we needed to bring teachers back and it made more sense to bring teachers who did not have any issues. First.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And next up, if there are no more questions for the complex, the next up, we have if he's, if he's queued, Mr. Jeremy Gobiel, the principal at the Early Childhood Center is going to talk about the transitions that are being made at the Memorial Early Childhood Center.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Lynch, school committee members and audience. It's, it's been an interesting year. My, and my daughter Grace, who's seventeen years old, back in September said, Dad, this has to be the craziest year for you to be taking over as your first principalship. And all the stuff going on. And I said, you know, we got into it a little bit and, and I looked around and I'm talking to all the other principals and we're looking at each other going, what are you going to do about this? What are you going to do about this? What are you going to, and we're looking at each other like, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. So it's been a very interesting year. And this year, we, we get to do it twice, which is, which is even better. So I do want to speak on behalf of, of my staff and let, you know, share that, that we are all very excited about students coming back. We are obviously a smaller school as far as our enrollment. We had three students who were in fully remote who are returning to full face-to-face. Each of those students, I had a chance to meet with this week and their parents, they got to come in and meet their teachers and to get a tour of the building. I did have one student that was going from hybrid to fully remote. That was their, their parents' decision. And so again, similar numbers, but much, on a much smaller scale. So. Next slide, Sean, please. Very similar to Ms. White and, and Mr. Thompson, excuse me. We had to look at everything, you know, soup to nuts here. And we, we sent out sort of a survival guide to, to our staff. And I've been taking notes and getting feedback from people about all the issues that need to be addressed. We're kind of calling this our second September. Things have changed and, and we need to, to adjust and, and adapt and overcome. But we use our gymnasium for our eating space. Other than snacks, it's up for our, for our lunches. It's worked out really well. We have half of the gymnasium is taken up by sixty desks and chairs, which will enable us to have three lunches. We have about twenty kids in each class. So it lines up very nicely, which still allows us with half of the gym to be able to use, to be able to be used for phys ed during times that lunch is not going on. Can we go back to that other slide, Sean? Thank you. It's been interesting because as far as like, you know, our, our staff, we, we have our custodians go through between each lunchtimes. Kids have assigned seats for every lunch during the same seat and at the same desk for every lunch every day. Our custodians are going, go through and, and clean them between lunches. And our kids have really been engaged in cleaning as well. And they had asked at the first couple of days of school, like, hey, can we help? We help. And so we, we allow the kids to, to wipe down the tables a little bit. And then the custodians go through and give it a real solid cleaning. And then after both lunches are, right now, after both lunches, but after all three lunches, they'll go back in, the custodians and, and sweep and mop. And, you know, as people have said before, our custodians, you know, kudos to them. They've, they've done such an amazing job from moving all the furniture and cleaning everything on a, on a daily basis. I see our custodians literally running between recesses with their what look like stormtrooper guns and they're, they're fogging or electrostaticing all of the, the equipment. So that continues to happen. We will get our cafeteria back, which was, which was interesting because Champions has been in there providing full day childcare. And that's been amazing. And I, and I was, I'm so happy that, that I, you know, offered that, that spot for them because our kids who, many kids who have been in our hybrid model on the days that they were remote were participating from the Champions program. And I, and honestly, I can't speak highly enough about the Champions program and the staff that work in there. They've been so engaging with our kids and they, 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 I walk by and I see, you know, ten, twelve kids sitting at computers, you know, with headphones on, socially distanced, spaced out. But they're focused, they're engaged and it's neat. I'll, sometimes I'll come over and I'll pop in and I'll, you know, wave to the teacher that they're on, that they're on with and the kids that are in class and it's been, it's been a really good process. But we will get our cafeteria back. And our plan right now is we've been using a classroom for breakfast because the numbers have been small enough where we can put them, put them all in what's our, currently our library and keep them, you know, socially distanced. And, and it's been working out great, but with all the kids returning, well, those numbers will pretty much double. So we will be able to use our cafeteria for, for that, for breakfast. We'll also try to use our cafeteria for, one of the issues that our, that our teachers had, had asked about was doing small group instruction. And how do we, how do we maintain social distancing while doing small group reading or math literacy instruction? So we'll be able to provide that space for our teachers to, to do that in there. Snack breaks and mask breaks are, again, as everybody else has said, our teachers have been amazing and creative. We are going to do mask breaks, so shorter mask breaks and including snack breaks in the classroom. So every one of the classrooms, the, the students have, the teachers have identified areas with stickers on them and they've assigned a sticker to each kid and said, okay, when we have mask break, this is where you can sit. And they can eat their, their snack there as well. And they're all six feet apart, so they have their masks off. Again, you know, kudos to the custodians and our teachers for making the spaces creatively to, so that this, it provides for, for this, these opportunities. We also look at, as we see here, the specials will be a combination of some push-in and then our PE. As, as folks were just mentioning, you know, with the weather getting nicer, I know Ms. Florio is looking excited, looking forward to getting outside and getting the kids out, running around. We're fortunate enough to not, enough to have the field behind the school. And then again, somebody else had mentioned about the tent. I think Mr. Thompson, we might have the tent up there. So in Clement weather day, she could still do PE possibly outside. Mr. Sisliano? And again? So safety, traffic flow and transitions. Again, we have signage all over the building. One of the things that, that I shared with our staff is just a reminder that while we've had these arrows on the, on the ground, on the floor, that it hasn't really been an issue because we really have such minimal sort of interactions between classes this, during the first part of this year. With more kids in the building, there's more chances that we'll have kids sort of passing each other. And so it's going to be critical that we make sure that they stay to the right. And again, as Mr. Thompson said, you know, especially with our kindergartners, every transition we do, they're in, you know, single file lines and, and, you know, the the, the teachers have them like little baby ducklings and, and they just walk around the building and follow their teachers around. So it's a, it's a pretty neat thing. We continue to remind our students obviously of, you know, making sure we're hand washing and, and social distancing. Masks has been such an amazing thing to me. We, we talked about extended mask breaks, which is really basically recess. The kids get outside and they get to run around. And we have two areas, two kind of recess areas that we have available to us. And the kids are allowed to take their masks off, but not if they're on the equipment. And it's amazing, it, it's been so neat to watch these five and six-year-old kids, I mean, which is what kindergarten is all about, is about learning how to play and share and take turns. And they don't want to take their, their masks off. They want to just climb and, and play and they, there's areas outside where they can take, take their masks off. And they'll take, they'll move away from everybody, take their masks off, sit there for a couple of seconds, a couple of minutes, put their masks on, get back into the, in the games or climbing on the equipment with their friends. They, our transitions, again, our staff, we have, it's, it's just such an interesting, beautiful building in that we have several stairwells and several exit doors. And so our staff have already started thinking about, all right, well, I know how, how I can do transition at the end of the day. I'm just going to go out this door that's right here. And I'm going to go out this stairwell, down the stairwell and, and out this door here. So they're already having these conversations. And it's been, it's been so neat to, to watch. To watch them all doing, doing this. So I believe that's all I have as far as the, the slides. I'd love to entertain any questions.
Mr. Gobiel. The only thing I'll say is, I can definitely tell, you know, you always hear from a first-year principal, it always gets easier. I can't think it's not going to get easier for you than this year. So that's a good thing.
I'll share that with my daughter.
I think you're doing a fantastic job and really appreciate everything that you've done. And given a year that you could have never planned for or hoped for. So thank you. But with that, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Gobiel? Mr. Gobiel, I'm going to ask you a question not related to this. How has registration been going?
It's good. Mrs. Gudine and I have connected. It's really been just kind of open. I haven't had a whole lot of contact and just, it's just let, let it run. But I believe she said we have a hundred nine registered, students that have registered for K for next year. Which is about, I think, what, what we were thinking at this point. And so we're, we're looking at getting all the registration and screening. We're going to, we're going to do a screening this year. We didn't, I don't know if people are aware, but we did not do a kindergarten screening last year, which usually takes place in the spring. And people were wondering if we were going to do it in the summer. And we didn't. And it, and it's been pretty remarkable. The classrooms are all, all ended up you know, being divvied up pretty nicely. So registration and, and K orientation screenings. We're in the process of, of working on that all right now.
Fantastic. Mr. Oakley, go ahead.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted the opportunity to say thank you to you as well. You know, we were, we're heaping praise on Mrs. White, Mr. Thompson. I think you, you deserve it as well. And so just wanted to say thank you for all the work you've done. And this plan's awesome. And, and that's it. Thank you.
You're welcome. I actually think I probably deserve more praise than those two, but.
Very nice.
Any other questions?
Come on, Mr. Lynch, don't you think?
Well, twenty percent of the kids.
Bring them on, give me more.
You're getting them, April fifth. Okay, if there are no more questions for Mr. Gobiel, we'll move on to Mrs. Latander at the Nichols Middle School. A big jump from kindergarten to sixth, seventh and eighth grade. And we certainly welcome, she made the big jump this year from the kindergarten and preschool to, to the middle school. And we thank you for doing that. She's done a great job this year. And Mrs. Latander, you're on.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. Good evening, Mr. Chair, school committee and Mr. Lynch. I appreciate the opportunity to share our plan as we are going to head back, April fifth. So we are very excited to see all our students return. I think our teachers are just as excited to see the students, but also to see their colleagues. Because the other half of their team, they never see. So our staff has not been together as an entire team since the first ten days in September. So we all look forward to seeing each other and working together as a team and sharing our ideas and learning from one another. But we are very excited for our students to be able to see their friends as well. So I think the first two weeks of school will be, well, actually, April fifth will feel like the first two weeks of school in September, because everyone will be getting to see each other once again. And they haven't seen each other in a long time. So, and that's just a friendly reminder to everybody that with all the students going on the buses, buses might run a little slower the first few days or the first week as we transition in. So we have a lot of new routines to put in place, but here are our numbers. As you can see, if you combine the forty-six and the five forty-seven from cohort one and the hybrid, that was five hundred ninety-three students. And now we have six hundred and twenty-one that will be in. It's about a twenty-eight student difference. And actually, my numbers keep changing every day. I have three or four five changes that happened just today with families calling, changing their mind. And I'd rather take care of it now before the April fifth start because our class size and numbers in seventh and eighth grade are pretty full. We've been three feet, three to five feet apart all year, especially in sixth and seventh grade because our class size is huge. And so we've been doing very well, knock on wood, that with three to five feet apart, our teachers have been fantastic and our students deserve a lot of kudos for maintaining the three feet to six feet apart, depending on where we are in our traveling and our spaces. So the majority of the students that came back were from seventh grade. And some of the challenges with the transition back is making sure our students who have pre-algebra in seventh grade, if they were in a cohort with pre-algebra, to make sure that they had a classroom where they could transition and receive pre-algebra when they return, because our pre-algebra classroom is full. So we had to do some shuffling and rearranging of scheduling. In eighth grade, we have students that also take algebra. So those are some of the little layers and nuances of scheduling, but we have made it work thus far, knock on wood. So we're excited to see all our students come back. And my numbers are climbing of people coming in or transitioning out. And I can give you those, give you those updates at a later time, because I have another four-page document that I've been working off of with my staff. So they know who's coming in, who's going. So we are doing very well thus far. And if we can go to the next slide, that would be great. All right. So we do have three lunches and we will maintain three lunches. And because we have two teams on each grade level, one team will be in the calf, the other team will be in the gymnasium. And with the new schedule that was implemented this fall, we have about twenty minutes between lunches, which has been amazing. Because we've been able to have that time to really clean and our custodians have gone right through and sprayed with their, we call them the Ghostbuster packs on the back. Go through the building and spray the cafeteria or the gym. We do have designated seating charts for each location. We've been using them all year for contact tracing purposes. Students are seated by homeroom. We have made adjust, adjustments to those seating charts. I know students like to sit with their friends. And it's been a big adjustment, especially for our seventh and eighth graders who've never been, I mean, who have been in Nichols Middle School before. And our sixth graders, what they see this year is all they know about middle school so far, just because they ended in the, in the COVID times. So we are flexible with our seating to a certain degree. We do have to, any changes we make, we have to make note of on our seating charts and we date everything. So that if someone does become COVID positive or we have to contact trace, we go back to those seating charts. And each teacher does the same in the classroom. So they have seating charts that they put in Aspen, they print it out, they give one to the office, give one to all the UA teachers. And so anytime any seats are changed or moved, we have to have a copy of them and we keep track of all of that. So we can do our due diligence and contact tracing and notifying parents that their child was in close contact if that were to be the case. So we can seat a hundred seven students in our cafeteria. We are putting a hundred and twenty desks in the gym. And that's a little more than we need. But we have that many desks just so we have some flexibility in seating and moving. But we have that many desks just so we have some flexibility in seating and moving um students around. Plus, we have our peanut free students that we need to accommodate for. Um. Our mass breaks have been implemented since the beginning of the year. They were taking them every fifty minutes. Um, and we decided that since we have five content areas on each grade level, that students. The teachers would go down to mass break at certain times. So if you are ELA teacher, you might go to mass break ten minutes into the period. If you're a math teacher, you might go twenty minutes into the period. And then they had designated doors in which they would go out to maintain that that crossing paths. Um, with everyone returning, everyone will have to do their due diligence. If they all go out, if two classrooms go out one door, we have plenty of space. Where they can spread out and maintain that six feet of social distancing. Um, we have classrooms that go out the front door as well. So it's pretty fun to watch when you have um sixth, seventh and eighth graders. Because when you see them outside, it's almost like a mini recess for them and they definitely need to move. And I know myself, I don't sit still very well. So. Our students are in the um classroom all day, so. Um, they do need that movement break. You know, the mass breaks serve as a movement break as well. Um, in the gymnasium, we'll have a separate point of sale register where students will be able to. Get their lunch and it will be calculated. Um, the classrooms that will go to the gym will have to take lunch count in the morning. So our cafeteria ladies can have an estimate of how many lunches they need to prepare and wheel down on carts into the gym. So they will have that all available and students still can buy snack in the gym. So um we've worked really well with Rebecca Bagnell and Laura Wixton to uh figure out what that system would look like. So we're we're ready to roll. Um, also on mass breaks, um, we have our cluster areas. We are fortunate in this building where we have three cluster areas, one on each team. And those cluster areas have had tape on the floor six feet apart. So in the event that there's inclement weather, we can do our mass breaks in our cluster areas. Or we can use the cafeteria when it's not lunchtime, of course, and we also have the auditorium space. And we have the main hallway. And I have to say, our custodians have been amazing. That as soon as someone goes in a cluster area and has a break, I think Mr. Hallgren um has radar on this and he's there right away. And um spraying down the areas and Garrett Perry as well. So our custodians have been amazing through all this. Um, they received rave reviews from from our staff and even from our um families based on the surveys we set out from our school council. So um everyone's been doing a fantastic job, keeping everybody clean, keeping everybody safe, following the rules. And everyone's not setting those expectations. Our traffic flow this year, we're basically all of this is the same coming in. Um, we use seven different doors and we spread out our minivans to enter near their classrooms down around the back. And so that's worked out really well. A parent drop off area, there's a door right down by the music hallway. So our students come in. Right down the music hallway, Mrs. Burnham and Mrs. Young are right there to greet our students every morning as they come in. We have staff throughout the hallways. Um, we have staff in the main doors. We have sixth, seventh and eighth graders all coming in different doors. The parent drop off students coming in different doors. Um, so we have um the stanchion that we have these tall orange dividers down the hallway. Just to remind middle school students that we are still following uh proper traffic padding patterns and staying to the right. Um, if you give them a big space, they take up big space. So um and just to reinforce the expectations of maintaining. Um, three to six feet apart while traveling in lines from one place to the other. Our staff also um travel with their class. So our unified arts teachers might meet their class at the stairwell, the main office area, and they drop off a class and pick up a class. So all the teachers, everybody is involved. All hands are on deck when we transition and student students to help maintain um safety. Next slide, please. And then it's reverse um at dismissal time. At dismissal time, we have the six doors opposed to the seven because we don't use the music um wing to end exit the doors. Um, I know there'll be double traffic coming in and going out. Um, so we have a staggered plan. And the teachers know in the cluster area that's closest to the stairwell, that cluster area will dismiss first. And the teachers have been awesome about paying attention one class at a time, one behind the other as they exit. So we'll be going over all these procedural things with our staff once again. Um, on our PD days on April first and April second, so thank you for that time. Um, so we'll have our stagger dismissal, parent pickup students and sports, intramurals, all exit a couple of minutes earlier just to get out of the way of the traffic flow before we dismiss the students for buses. Uh, so that's been working out very well and we continue to plan to do that. And with our staff, if we feel like there's any crowding, they'll know to stop and then let a few people go by and then continue the traffic. So. Um, everyone stepped up the plate and has done a fantastic job, and I feel like we've been very fortunate this year. I remember the beginning of the year, we thought, oh, if we make it two weeks, that's a bonus. If we make it a month, it's a miracle. And and here we are at almost at the end of March. So. Um, I talked about the student transitions and the UAs. Um. So with our gymnasium being used for cafeteria, biz ed will be outside. If there's inclement weather, we have the auditorium space and we also have the old health room. So students might get their health lessons in the classroom. Um, cluster spaces are not big enough to take. Um, every student to lay on the floor and do exercises, um, because you have to be ten feet apart outside with mask on. Um, if you're doing physical fitness inside. Um, so we have different spaces already allocated. We have talked with our music teachers and our phys ed teachers about doing different traffic patterns. Instead of walking through the main hallway by the office, maybe they take the kids around the building out back and come in a different door. Um, just to alleviate that traffic between lunches from ten thirty to twelve thirty where we have our three lunches. Uh, we do have a bathroom sign out system now. We're using the Google Sign Out. Uh, Mr. Rothmitch was very instrumental in pulling that together. And now we're going to be switching over to e-hall pass. We just need to get some training done. Um, Mr. Rothmitch will be trained in that and he'll train our staff um come um April first and second. So we have a lot of things we're going to get accomplished. On the April first and second days, every student um whose schedule is changing in any way, shape or form, all has to be adjusted in Aspen. So our guidance team on April first will be making all those schedule changes. And our students will all get their individual emails with their new schedule, either next Thursday or Friday before they return. So our staff need that time to be able to make all those switches. And we can't do it while they're doing their online learning classes on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So there's a lot of layers of things that need to happen and honestly, I think everything's going well. I feel like we're in a great position to have our students come back and. We're looking forward to it. Um, so things, I think, I think we are in a great place. Um, so just kudos to our amazing staff and our custodians. And um I think that's it for now unless anyone has any questions.
Um, first of all, Heidi, thank you as we've been saying to everybody, but I do want to. One thing I forgot to mention to principals, and I want to single you out for this. I want to thank you for making my life easier. In the sense that a lot of times during these meetings, you and some of the principals. Have hung out in the chat room and answered questions so we didn't have to and made it much, much easier. So I really appreciate that. And I know families appreciate getting those answers directly from principals than each and every one of you. So. I I want to single that out. So thank you.
No, thank you. I am, I'm glad to do it and glad to help. I know as a parent, sometimes you have things lingering in your mind and you just want to answer to it. And I always tell parents, I'd rather you call and ask me. Than to sit on it and fester and worry about it. So let's just figure it out together if there's a question or concern. So if I can be of help in any way, that would be great. And I do want to um bring up one more thing. Um, Mr. Ness, you did mention at last meeting about the lockers and how that works, and I did have slides on that. Um, the lockers, our teachers either label them by a color sticker or by a number or a letter. So we might have a green, orange and red stickers on the lockers. And the teachers will say, oh, if you have a green sticker, go out to your locker. So we instituted that right from the very beginning. Um, so in some classrooms, they don't use the lockers at all because the students are in the same room all day, so they have their stuff in the classroom. And our sixth graders have desks and they're smaller bodies and smaller desks, and so they are able to put all their belongings inside their desk. Um, so it's worked out really well. The teachers have a system down. Our extension block in the morning and during that arrival time has really allowed us to um make those things happen and help students transition and get ready for learning and. Start their day. So I just wanted to make sure I answered that question from last meeting.
Any additional questions for Mrs. Latander?
Man, go right ahead.
Thank you. And thank you for answering the locker question, but and similar to with um. The complex, just I want to thank the cafeteria workers. I don't know why it didn't dawn on me until you um started talking and presenting, but. Just the amount of work that they're doing, you having to transport lunches from one part of the school to another and having to be um. Like delivering food essentially, you know, they're working just as hard as everybody else. So I just want to thank them as well.
Yes, um, everyone's pitching in. It's a big team effort. You know, we can't do it by ourselves and we've all. Everyone has great ideas and it's been great because we just do a shared Google Doc with staff. And said, start throwing your questions in and we'll answer them and together we figure it out and. They come up with things or notice things that I might not notice. Um, so it's really been a true team effort for everybody. Um, I see there's a question in the chat. I don't know if you want me to answer it through Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead if you want to.
I know Miss Osborne, if a student is not changing cohorts, do we know if there are teacher changes at NMS yet? So if your child's not changing cohorts and you didn't get a phone call, your child is staying where he or she has been the whole time. Um, anyone who has made a change, received a phone call during the week. If you feel like your child made a change and you haven't received a phone call, please call the office and we'll um look into it and take care of it for you.
If there's nothing else, Mrs. Latander, thank you, Heidi. We do appreciate it and everything you do. Uh, at this point, we're going to sort of wrap this up with just a three points if I could. The first being mine and the second, the two, I'll I'll hand over to Sarah Hickey. Uh, first of all, lunches, lunches next week, we have a remote week. Um, and we have a Monday through Friday, but we're going to offer grab and go meals for anyone that would like them. They they need to be picked up uh at the HBB uh in the morning and you can contact Rebecca Bagnell at her office. If you have any questions, she's the food service director. But lunches, grab and go lunches will be available. At Berklin School for the entire district, well, the K through eight uh next week, uh pre-K through eight, excuse me, next week. Uh, and those will be available. So and then all remote students from that time on, beginning in April fifth, will continue to be able to access grab and go meals. Any day they want to. Uh, that has slowed down considerably and we want to let people know that that is still going on. And that is an option uh for you folks who are who are uh online academy, et cetera. So and next I'd like to bring in Sarah Hickey and she's just going to talk about the champions program. And uh the tent situation. We heard tents mentioned two or three times this evening and and she has more details on tents. We've been working on this for. A while now and and I think we're at the point where we're willing to uh come forward and and answer some questions with specific questions with regard to that. Sarah Hickey, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much Superintendent Lynch. Uh, thank you for having me, Chairman Young and School Committee members. Um, I am speaking about two things tonight. The first thing is the champions program. I spoke with our our director of our champions program this afternoon. And I wanted everybody to know that next week, the week of March twenty ninth through April second, where we have. Um, an unusual schedule for our schools, that their program, their full day program at the MEK is still going to be functioning. In its full capacity and Kerry Kabaki, who runs the our our programs for us. Did tell me that they have two spots available in that program if there is anybody interested in um in enrolling in that for next week. Then uh after next week, April fifth through the end of the year, the champions program will function. In the same way that it did last year. They will have before and after school care at the MEK, the HBB, MKG. Um, schools for families as they had in the past. Um. The second thing I am going to be talking about is tents. And I want you to know that I sent out a request for quotes, a formal request for quotes to a number of vendors. And I'm expecting, I I gave a deadline of tomorrow as uh the time to respond to the request for quotes. So I'm expecting to send out a contract to a vendor tomorrow and with tents being installed at the end of next week. Uh, I put into the request for quotes that the um. The vendor would come out biweekly and inspect the tents and tighten up any ropes that needed to be tightened up. There's an agreement for. Should we have a strange storm, would we uh need to drop the tents? Store them for a storm and then put them back up again. So I tried to consider all sorts of scenarios. So the tents. Uh, were requested to be put up, one at HBB, one at MKG and one at the playground area at MEK. Um. And that's it for tents.
Any questions on tents, lunches or champions? Not necessarily in that order.
Uh, Brian, before you move on, I do want to say one thing that I think is important and we have to think about it. We know how difficult it's been for us, right? And um having to sort of move classrooms in different spaces, but. Um, the other thing I want to mention to people out there is it also affects the community. So for example, Sunday School Basketball League could not function this year because we didn't have space for them to function in. So they couldn't play basketball. So I think lots of programs like that uh are getting lost and. We want to remember those people because they do really good work for our kids and we want to make sure that um. People know that those places haven't had um any ability to to do things because of what happens with the schools. How we have to constantly restructure and refunction. So I just wanted to bring that up too, bro. Go ahead, go ahead, Rich.
Sure. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you very much, Mrs. Hickey, for that. Uh, it's funny, I had a few questions while you were talking and as you usually do, you answered them all before um before it was even over. Uh, I was just kind of curious if you could give me an idea of of, you know, how how big are these things? Are they like, you know, fifty by fifty or or um how big are these tents?
Uh, in in the request for quotes that I put out, I asked for twenty foot by thirty foot tents.
That's a big tent. All right, thank you.
Well, there there had been rumors circulating around about other school systems, you know, I heard that Hanover bought circus tents. Well, I called Hanover and I said, did you really? And because I was envisioning the red and white striped and. It would have been fantastic, but that's not what they did. They have just regular tents and we too are going to have just regular tents.
Thank you.
Cleaning up cleaning up after the elephants would have been difficult for the custodial staff too.
So we're not doing trapeze classes for us, Jim?
Not that I know of.
Okay, that's okay. Uh, Craig, you had a question. Go right ahead.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Again, great work. Um, Miss Hickey, this is this is good. Um, but with the tents and the new desks and all the new PPE and even some of the staff we've had to hire for the full reopening, is this stuff that is covered? Um, through the COVID relief or is this things that is coming out of our town budget?
Uh, we have a number of sources of COVID relief and and the tents and the additional staff are all being covered in some fashion. So we have. Um, we have grants that are uh through the federal government that are being managed by this by DESI. That we have, we have the Plymouth County money, which we spend and we can our. Request reimbursement for eligible expenses. We had a special earmark from Senator Pacico's office. So there have been a number of uh funding sources that have come in for us. That have covered all of our needs for COVID up to this point.
Okay, and just as a follow up to that, and I'm I'm hoping you can get this number for me next week. Um, but is it possible, we've done a lot over the course of this year from the computers and the laptops. To now with being reimbursed and things like that. Do you could you dig up a total or an estimate on how much? We have spent um because of COVID this year and how much is being reimbursed?
I I can get you a better number next week. What I can tell you is the submissions to Plymouth County have been right around six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars at this point. So um, but I will have a complete rundown of all of the funding sources and what we have. Um, spent on COVID mitigation.
And that and through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Rowe, that will only increase, those numbers will only increase. Um, as we move forward through the remainder of the year, the final three months here and going into the summer. So um, we can anticipate a significant increase in there.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. Okay.
Okay, I'll move on with my report if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair. I just, uh, my next piece here is the mass updates regarding quarantining, masking and travel. Mass updates regarding quarantining, masking and travel orders. As you know, on March 22nd, travel orders changed. And uh, I sort of going to do this in the form of, of sort of a, of, of an FAQ piece, if you don't mind. Uh, first question might be, how's the travel order change impacted current school policies? Uh, and as of Monday, March 22nd, the Massachusetts Travel Order is replaced with a travel advisory. Uh, this new travel advisory urges all persons entering Massachusetts, including returning residents. To quarantine for 10 days upon their arrival if they've been out of the state for 24 hours or more. Uh, it's important to note that travelers in the following categories are exempt from the quarantine advisory. Children who are under 10 years old, anyone returning to Massachusetts after being out of state for fewer than 24 hours. Uh, travelers who have received a negative COVID-19 result on a test administered not more than 72 hours prior to their arrival. In Massachusetts, travelers may also test out of the quarantine advisory after arrival in Massachusetts. As long as they quarantine until receiving a negative test result. Workers who enter Massachusetts to perform critical infrastructure functions. And also travelers who are fully vaccinated, who have received two doses of either the Moderna or Pfizer. Or one dose of the J and J uh and put tack on another 14 days after that. And who do not have symptoms. So that travel advisory has changed. Uh, our, basically our rules will change as a result of those travel advisories at our school level. Um, and we're not in a position to enforce many of those. So it's important to note that moving forward. There are questions of masking that come up uh with regard to the new DEES guidelines and the new guidelines that have been issued by the state. Like who still needs to wear a mask at school? And the answer, simple answer is everyone does. We continue to have a mask policy that the school committee adopted and that we'll continue to adhere to for the remainder of the year. Um, and even if an individual is fully vaccinated, they will have to continue to must, they must still wear a mask. So even if we have fully vaccinated teachers and fully vaccinated high school students, if you will. Or even college student interns, whatever, um, everyone in our schools will continue to be required to be fully masked. Unless they have a medical exemption uh that we know about and that, that is on record with us. Um, if I'm fully vaccinated, do I still need to distance and wear a mask? Social distancing will also be required. Um, and six feet, three feet rule will continue to be employed in our schools. So really nothing's changed with regard to masking and socially distancing. Obviously, hand washing is, continues to be uh strongly encouraged and certainly required, obviously, if you'd like to put it that way. Uh, questions about recess, we're going to adhere to those things. We talked about being on the playground and keeping those masks on. Jeremy Gobel made reference to it. I think Derek might have been least also. Uh, if they're out in an area of the playground where they're six feet apart. And they can run around and without the mask, that's fine. That's a mask break. But if they're in a confined area, sliding down slides or swinging on swings, they will need to continue to wear those masks. Um, so again, continue to mask at school. It is our policy. We'll keep doing that. Uh, if somebody's eating lunch and they've been fully vaccinated, they can be six feet apart, but they can't be any closer than that. Uh, just because they've been fully vaccinated. These rules I would anticipate might change for next year. As society frees up a little bit, but hopefully if we can change, if we can stay with these mitigation strategies. They've worked thus far. Our numbers are low. Our numbers might go up a little bit this week, tomorrow. Uh, our COVID dashboard numbers may end up being nine or 10 or 11 tomorrow, depending on some numbers that have come in. Um, and we need to continue to let people know that this is not going away. It continues to be here and we need to be, continue with our prevention strategies uh moving forward. So. Some updates there on the travel advisory has changed things a bit. Uh, and if anyone had questions on those, they can certainly contact Paula Magnasco, our Coordinator of Nursing. Uh, and she is available to answer any questions you might have with regard to any health policies we have in the district. Any questions from the committee on that? Hearing none, seeing none. Um, I will move on to my next uh discussion item here. Is the sort of the introduction of this year's discussion about whether or not we want to continue. To remain a school choice district, a school, a school district of choice. Um, we currently have, I believe, 43 total members. Projections for next year would be about 39. Um, and we need to have a public hearing on this per our school committee policy, which will be scheduled in the near future. At a school committee meeting uh to discuss this and numbers we might have. I've put in your Dropbox, if you've seen it, uh, some enrollment projections based on a few things, based on classes moving forward. Uh, based on estimates of kindergarten students we might get for next year. Based on estimates of ninth grade students, depending on what that class looks like moving forward. Uh, the current eighth grade class is a large class. Uh, some of them will move on to agricultural schools. Some of them will move on to Bristol Plymouth. Some of them may move on to private high schools. Uh, but we have to, we can't predict that number. We just predict it based on uh past numbers that we had. In the room we have in the high school. Concerns about the high school, we'll focus around a building. Those originally we were told would be built for 672 students. They expanded to 720. We can build a building that's 15% above that, which puts us in the 820 region. Um, we currently have over that at the high school. So that's a consideration that we certainly need to look at when we're making decisions about high school school choice. And perhaps limiting those numbers based on enrollment. Uh, those students that we have are called stay put. They, we don't lose them. And then as a, as a school committee, we would make this, make decisions based or you would make decisions. Based on these enrollment projections, we need a little bit more information with regard to the high school. And we need a little more information with regard to kindergarten before we make solid numbers on those. We could probably make educated guesses about reach grade level moving forward. Um, but that's just a sort of the introduction to the school choice discussion for this year. Um, you know, by policy, we need to make decisions by certain dates. And I can also drop that policy into the Dropbox for you to, to review. As you probably remember, we uh finalized that, I believe in 19, we already did it. Um, in 2019. So those of you on the committee can remember that discussion. And I will certainly, for those of you do not, it's a good reminder to have that school committee policy uh dropped into the Dropbox so that you can have that.
Mr. Rowe.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Just to, I, I believe I saw it on the document that was shared in our Dropbox. But um, the homeschool students, I believe it was for this past year, which I know. Changed because of the whole COVID situation. Um, is, I, I'm not sure if it's on that document, but is there a way we could look at the, the norm? Of what homeschool students need to do?
Correct, Mr. Rowe, and that's an important point that, that if you look at that document, there's a third graph at the bottom. That is another predictor, if you will, because as you know, at the beginning of the year. We sort of does, we basically doubled our number. We went from about 70 to 140 or thereabouts with our homeschool students. We would anticipate. That probably half of those students that went homeschool for this year may come back for next year. So those numbers would be included into our totals for each grade level for each school. So as we look at those totals, you would look at sort of the graph one, uh, which includes the school choice students. So if you look at the three graphs on your page that were dropped. You have the first graph that has the numbers in each grade level of each student. And then you have um. Basically, the next graph is the number of school choice students for each grade level, but that. Is number already included in graph one. So this, the homeschool students coming back would be added on to the. The graph at the top, number one, and we can get into this and we'll project this for the discussion at the hearing. So that everyone could see it and we can, we can divide it. And I'll also get some class numbers associated with that. For example. At HBB, there's 99 students in grade one projected for next year. That's in five classrooms. What's not on that right now is the classroom, the classroom numbers. Uh, the same thing at, at, at MKG. So if you look at that class and you say, okay, 99 divided by five, there's less than 20 students in a class. At HBB projected for next year. Can we afford to put another one in one class? So those are the questions you need to answer looking forward. Can we add five students at the school choice? As you know, those people in the budget subcommittee, um, that school choice money, that revolving account that we have comes in handy. It pays currently for three teachers, I believe, in the budget uh and potentially more if necessary. So uh, where that was not uh in place a few years back. That is a significant amount of money that does pay for faculty members uh and is utilized. But we also need to balance that with uh, you know, a school at the high school. That was built, basically being built for about 820 students, obviously with extra rooms, et cetera. Uh, for different departments, uh, but uh, that's a number we'd have to look at pretty closely and pretty carefully.
If I could, the one thing I do want to caution the committee about too, though, is no matter where your high school's at. You still have to have some choice at the high school to allow. When you run into problems with kids having to move for a variety of reasons. Um, there is no longer the senior privilege there used to be where if you start your senior year, you can stay. So if a child family moves out their senior year. We're supposed to tell them to graduate from wherever they move to. And that do, doesn't make sense to me and I don't think it makes sense to anybody. Who works at a high school. Um, so you want to make sure that you at least have some, some wiggle room for the principal to be able to handle that.
And our policy also calls for school choice opening once a year at the end of June and if. Possible, right before the start of the school year. Um, so that's another decision I think that's cool, that the school committee can make as part of this uh public hearing that we'll have.
Thank you. You had a question. Go right ahead.
So are we, is this just to like preview the discussion and we're going to talk more about it next week? Um, and kind of like come up with a plan next week or are we coming up with some sort of idea right now?
What the superintendent and I talked about was making a motion to be a choice community next year. And then establishing the numbers. So the superintendent could contact DESI and let them know we will be a choice community. Now, what form those choices, what those grades take is another discussion, but it's just letting them know that we're a choice community. So. For example, parents now could fill out the form, even though we haven't established the notes. If, if a parent. Filled out a form for say kindergarten and we clo, we didn't allow kindergarten. My assumption would be somebody would call them and just say, we're not taking choice students from kindergarten.
Thank you.
Teresa, you had a question?
Yeah, just because I'm new to this, I just want to be clear, we can vote, once we get to that point. We can vote by school. So we could say no kindergarten, but yes, one through five. No six through eight, but yes, high school. So I just wanted to be clear, since this is new for me.
But yeah. We can, we can get granular, really. Uh, I would say at the complex, we talk about. Grade levels because if there's a class size difference, if, if there was, there was room in HBB in second grade. Uh, and there wasn't any in the MKG, school choice is for the grade level at Middleborough, not for the school itself. Obviously, at, at, at our other schools, the MEK, Nichols Middle School and the high school, obviously you're choosing a school. Uh, so the key here is that if, if we don't want to touch grade eight, we leave it out of the discussion. And we say, okay, just at sixth grade. Uh, we have three spots available or five spots available at sixth grade and we can do that. We've done it by school in the past, but if we get to the point where we're really looking at some heavy duty numbers. And on a particular grade, then we'd stay away from that grade because we don't want to get to the point. Where we sort of almost got to this year where we will almost had to create another transitional team in that building.
I was thinking about that, right? But because Heidi has spoken about how seventh and eighth are. Very full, so that would be a concern. So I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that as we. Add this discussion. So thank you.
Especially with the three foot.
Yeah.
I, Rich, before you go, I do want to say one point that I think is important. Um, if you think about it, we have a brand new high school opening. So there would be, obviously if I was a parent from another community. Who was looking to have my child go to a particular community, I would think that I would look at brand new high schools first. The reason I'm saying that aloud to everybody is sort of, having lived this in the previous district. Where I lived and was a school committee member, um, we at times had lowered the number for high school. Um, because we, we had reached numbers, so we lowered the number for high school. What we saw at that point. Was an influx in the, in the grade that we had open. So for example, if you have sixth grade open. And you're thinking ahead as a parent that I want my child to go to this newer high school. Then I'm going to try to get my child in the grade that has the most slots. So I just bring that up to everybody to let them know too. You have to, you have to look back too because. If you have a, a, for example, a grade that has a lot of openings. You could see an influx of where we haven't before because people want to get their kids ready to move into high school that way. Mr. Oakley, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, through you to Mr. Lynch. Uh, Mr. Lynch, thank you very much for offering that, the, the extra info there about. You know, 99 divided by five. I know that would be super helpful for me to see as well, um, you know, like the number of classes. So uh, that would be great. Uh, if you don't mind doing that.
Yeah, and, and we, the, the principals each year reevaluate each grade level and where the numbers are. For example, at grade. Five projected for next year at MKG, there's 120. Would we need six teachers or five teachers? Uh, and that gets in, that's where you get into looking at perhaps adding an additional elementary school teacher. And you know, if, if you were following, and I know you were, in the last couple of years, we've had instances where we've reduced teachers at the, at the complex. Uh, but uh, you know, there've come a point where we may need to add them on too. You know, in a, in a meeting with the building inspector the other day, there continued to be. Uh, single family homes built at a, at a roaring pace in this town. I think there are 52. Single family homes being built right now. Uh, and as you know, there are also apartment buildings and duplexes going up. Uh, everywhere. Uh, so we'll continue to see, I think our population arising. So I. But the, the, the folks at, at the MSBA, the Mass School Building Authority figured out that for the next 10 years. Uh, we'd go down and we haven't seen that at all, even with COVID.
So a question, so a question came in that I know the answer to, having lived this before. So uh, Ms. Powers asked. So could you let a child attend grade six, seven or eight and then not let them attend our high school? The answer is no. Once they are in there, our student, um, and they are allowed to continue throughout the entire time. So. That's why you find more people coming in the ninth grade than the 10th grade. And some people come in for junior high. Um, so it depends. So if a child comes in at a grade, they will, they're allowed to stay for the entire time. Even if for some reason we had a large influx of residents, they still remain. Even if we were to end choice today, every choice student who is currently in our school would be, would remain. Mr. Oakley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just to follow up to that, just to drive home the point. Um, so when we're talking about these numbers per grade, what we really mean is like entrances. The new entrant, uh, new, uh, new people joining at that grade level, right? We don't mean like cumulative from when they started to when they end. Right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and, and that those notes that I, I put in, in your box are enrollment projections. For example. Currently there are 265 eighth graders at Nichols Middle School. The projection we have there is 225. It's probably going to be lower than that. Because we've had years where almost 80 students have gone to Bristol Plymouth. We've had years when kids go to Sacred Heart or Coil and that, those two schools have closed for high school, I believe. I know they have. Uh, but there are other choices, Bristol Aggie, uh, uh, and Norfolk Aggie. That students go to if that's their interest and it's a, not a technical vocational program that's offered at Bristol Plymouth. We pay separately for those students. Um, but uh, so that number could be more like 200. Uh, but the number could also be 230, depending on who makes that decision. So. We don't have those numbers yet from those vocational technical high schools. And those are a real driver here for class size at the high school. And our ability to make decisions about whether or not we want to let school, uh, students in under school's choice.
Greg, go right ahead.
I just want to address, uh. Mr. Oakley's question about, once we let a school, a person in, a student into, let's say a kindergarten. They do count each grade that they're moving through, right? As a school choice?
Correct.
So if we're limiting, let's say five per grade level, whatever. That student will take a spot each grade as they move through.
Right, right. Next year, our enrollment, school choice enrollment projections, if you look at that second graph. Are for three in the first grade. Those are three kindergarten kids moving up.
Yep.
And the two and the three in the second grade are three first graders moving to second. And so on and so forth.
Other questions? Okay, with that, um, the chairman entertained a motion to accept school choice for next year.
So moved?
Second.
Seeing none, and as again, we discussed before, the actual numbers will come later. This is just allowing the superintendent to let DESI know that we will be a school choice community. Um, it requires, as it does everything remotely, roll call. Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Ms. Farley?
Aye.
Ms. Janice?
Aye.
Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much, everybody, for that.
And that concludes my report this evening.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Lynch. I appreciate it. Um, just the MSBA update is things are still progressing the way they should. Um, we are about to move into April. Brian, what's the, I didn't mean for Brian to go, but I have one question for Brian. Brian, what's the date we take control of the building?
Well, substantial completion was scheduled for April second. That may be pushed up a little bit, but we, we're scheduled to move into the building on the sixteenth Friday. Um, supplies and then uh, the building will be occupied on the twenty-seventh of April by our students. That is the current plan.
Thank you very much. Any questions about the MSBA? We'll have more and more exciting news as we progress. Um, with that, go right ahead, Mr. Oakley.
Sorry, I just wanted to ask, um, uh, I know that uh, we're still uh, under budget and, and, you know, have not dug into the contingencies. Um, a, a ton yet, and I just wanted to see if we were still kind of in that same scenario. Um, I don't know much has changed at this point, but yeah.
Yeah, so we have a meeting shortly, so I'll have the exact numbers, because that will be closer to the completion of the, but we are under budget and will continue to be under budget.
Excellent. Thank you.
Significantly, I should say, too, Mr. Rowe.
We used to be able to say on time and under budget. Now we can say we're.
So, yeah, exactly. Um, any other questions about MSBA before I move on? The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's evaluation. I've asked the superintendent to put in the uh, for you shortly, the usual thing you get is list of sort of the year-end review. Um, I would remind everybody that our, per our um, sort of practice, um, all current school committee members will need to get me his review by next Friday, because that's the day before town election.
And I will get it to you by as soon as possible, probably over the weekend, maybe Saturday if I can. I'll get you the document, but that additional document that I usually put in describing activities. Um, I'm almost finished with that. So that'll get in there as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. I appreciate that greatly.
This planning process took precedent over that document.
What? Um, reminded to the school committee that we've moved our uh, meetings to April first and April fifteenth. Um, because of um, school vacation week. Um, also, there's the day on the hill, which will be virtual. That'll be April, Friday, April sixteenth. If people are interested, please let me know. Um, I sent you out um, a copy of the, I sent, we, we sent you the MOU, right? Everybody's got the M, the MOU is in your box. Uh, any questions about the MOU at all? That's the memorandum of, uh, understanding or memorandum of agreement with the teachers that allowed us to move forward for April fifth. Um, with that, chair will entertain a motion to allow me to sign it.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing that, Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Ms. Farley?
Aye.
Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. And the chair votes aye. Um, also wanted to let you know that we did, the superintendent and I did have a meeting with the, um, the last remaining piece of the contract that we had to work out was stipends. Um, this is sort of the extracurriculars that teachers are paid for. Um, we met with the union, we met with Sam, one of the union presidents, and we believe we have worked out all those pieces. So it looks like we are good to go and it won't, we, we will just have got that done in time to renegotiate the contract next year. So fantastic. Um, um, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Uh, do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, this for everybody is just a warrants for the year. Um, Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Ms. Farley?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
And Ms. Janess?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Um, I do want to point out that I have some sad news to report uh, for everyone tonight, and that is, um, uh, a person who's done a lot for the town of Middleborough, Ted Ayers, has passed away. Um, so I do want to, uh, wish the Ayers family well. Um, Ted was a fantastic uh, person. Um, and for being involved in town government, Ted was always there for me to be able to talk to if I had a question. Um, always was one to reach out and have conversations. Uh, and those conversations were fantastic. So I appreciate everything that, and we wish the Ayers family a lot. So thank you for that. Um, um, and with that, I want to go, I want to end on, Brian, go right ahead.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I just want to, I, that's the first news I'd heard on Ted Ayers and it's, it's uh, disconcerting, obviously saddened for sending long thoughts and prayers to his family. Um, you know, Ted Ayers is, is basically one of those gentlemen that is considered responsible for a number of things in this community. Uh, but one of them being, uh, they addressing and advancing the name Sachem, uh, uh, to which would be attached to athletics. There was also, there was always the Sachem newsletter at the high school. It started back in the twenties and it came all the way through up through, and it was a literary magazine. Um, and he, I believe, was the president of the class in nineteen sixty-four. Uh, voted through the student council to, to name the mascot in honor of, of the Sachem and, and brought that forward. So that is something that just a lot of people may not know about. Also, he lives on the parade route in North Middleborough, a beautiful old colonial home. Um, a lot of class, a lot of taste and, and uh, always hosted a great deal of nice folks there that always cheered the Charter Marching Society on and everybody that, that marched the Fourth of July Parade and and in a lot, just a whole, we'll hear a lot more about Ted's legacy in, in the next coming week. Um, but he meant a lot to this community a- and will always mean a lot to this community. So, thank you.
And Brian, I think the, the chief word you said there was gentleman. Uh, Ted was first and foremost a gentleman to everyone he came in contact with. So I will say that. Uh, Teresa, I saw your hand up, so.
Yeah, ju- just wanted to reiterate that, um, when I was on the FinCom and just doing the, the police station project and I learned a lot from Ted and I really got to know him pretty well through that time. And um, I was really very sad to hear that a little bit earlier this evening. So I wanted to just extend my condolences to his family as well.
Mr. Chair, you also worked very closely with Rob DeRozier in, in the redoing of the uh, the town hall and bringing it back to that uh, that building that it was supposed to be when it was built originally, because the ceilings had all been lowered and, and all that molding had been hidden and, and he really brought that building back um, to its original design, finding the right colors to match the colonial colors and um, just another fantastic community, uh, basically timed donation that he made countless, countless hours.
Absolutely. Um, with that, you know, it's sort of a sad note, but I'm happy we could end on a really positive note. Um, and that is, there's two great donations in tonight's uh, handout. And that's uh, first and foremost, from the Sharp Program, which is donating to the family, um, Resource Center. Um, and a very large check from the Braga family uh, to continue, uh, Jim Braga's um, in memory of Jim for the pathways to Business Center, which are the kids that go to Massa Soyet. Um, that family has over, gone over and above uh, making donations to us, and I want to thank them. And I want, I also want to thank Joanne Babin and the uh, Sharp Program, because uh, they gave us a nice check too.
And Mr. Chair, that final, that final note should be the Box Tops for Education to the John T. Nichols Junior uh, Middle School PTA. They applied for and were granted twenty thousand dollars for the PTA at the Nichols Middle School. And the Box Tops for Education wrote them a check for twenty thousand dollars to conduct activities for middle schoolers. Um, so that, that uh, should not go unnoticed. So thank you.
No, no. Um, and thank you for everybody who cuts those box tops. As uh, I have probably a hundred times over the course of my life, have to make sure those cereal boxes are taken care of. Does anyone have anything else they want to wish to mention beforehand? Ms. Duro?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to um, throw in my appreciation for Mrs. Babin and, and the Sharp Program. And I got the opportunity, thanks to her, to go in and do a little, um, some little projects with the kids. And I just thought it was a really awesome, awesome program that she was running there. And I understand that she has um, donated or uh, uh, designated the Family Resource Center as the place where that money should go. And I thought that was a really um, noble decision. Uh, and just wanted to uh, appreciate her and uh, and all the work that everyone did to put on that program. I'm sorry to see it go.
Thank you. Um, one thing I think is, um, I, that, that I want to hear from uh, later on, as we close out the year, is I'd like to hear from the Family Resource Center about their challenges this year, because I can't imagine that they, that they didn't have quite a few challenges. I know some of what went on, because obviously with the uh, Grab and Go Program, there was a lot of work done with the South Shore, um, collaboratives and, and things like that. So I want to make sure that we, we talk to her about sort of the issues, because um, I don't know where we'd be without, without that program, to be quite honest with you. Uh, given some of the things that I know our families have gone through, so. Um, anything else anyone wished to mention before we wrap it up? I know it's been a long night anyways, but it was about the reopening of school, so. Uh, with that, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Ms. Farley?
Aye.
Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and we'll be back next week, and thank you, everybody. Good night.